Please remain standing while councillor Fuller says prayers on behalf of the mayor's chaplain.
Father God, we thank you for bringing us here tonight. We thank you for this city and for the diverse people that live in it. And we thank you for all that they contribute to the life of our city. And we thank you for the privilege of representing them here tonight. And we ask that you will help us to make wise and just decisions as we seek to bring these things to your notice and for your pleasure, Lord. So just guide us, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded and streamed live on our website. Please can members also remember to speak directly into their microphone and to switch them on before speaking. I have also been asked at meetings of the council to make a standard evacuation announcement. Please note that in the case of an emergency, a bell will ring continuously. If this occurs, please leave the council chamber at once, taking your personal belongings with you. Follow the green fire exit signs to leave the civic centre onto Duke Street via the stairs which are located near to the end of the corridor adjoining this table. Lifts should not be used. Please gather by the War Memorial immediately outside the civic centre. And when it is safe to return to the building, an announcement will be made. You should not return to the building until told that it is safe to do so. Anyone attending this meeting is entitled to film it, but I should point out that only the councillors, officers and anyone sitting around these tables may be filmed. Members of the public should not be filmed, so please ensure that cameras are pointed only in this direction. Please, would you silence or switch off your mobile phones whilst the meeting is taking place? We come on to agenda item one, apologies for absence. I have received apologies for absence for this meeting from councillors Canning, Jeeps, Large, Mascot, Sampson, Scott, Thompson and Tron. Are there any others to report?
I've also had councillor Knight's apologies.
Thank you. Agenda item two. A charity called Remembering Shrebenitsa has asked all local authorities to mark the 27th anniversary of the Shrebenitsa massacre. I have agreed that an appropriate way for this council to do that would be to observe a minute's silence at this meeting to remember the victims and honour the survivors of that terrible event. I therefore invite you to stand in remembrance, please, if you are able to do so. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Other mayor's announcements. It is with regret that I inform you of the death last month of ex-councillor Trevor Miller. Trevor was mayor of Chelmsford with his wife Maureen as Mayor S from 2013 to 14. He was a very kind man, a diligent councillor and a known note taker for over 20 years, being elected in 1985 until his retirement in 2015. He was a school governor and on the board of CHP. And I had the pleasure of being his deputy mayor for the year of his mayorality. I attended his funeral on behalf of the mayor and of the city council. So I ask you once again if you are able to please stand for one minute's silence in memory of Trevor. Thank you. Thank you. Please be seated. My final announcement is that the mayor has asked me to advise council that she will have undertaken 65 engagements by the end of July. And please keep an eye out for her newsletters that are circulated by email, which will advise you of up and coming fundraising events for her charity, Chelmsford YMCA. Moving on to declarations of interests. Members will be aware of the need to declare any interests that they have in the business at this meeting, either now or when we come to the item. Does anyone wish to declare any interest at this point? Yes, councillor.
Thank you, madam deputy mayor. My wife is currently trying to sell a charming cottage in Old Springfield. And at the moment, with the current state of the housing market, there is a real danger that we may breach the 12-month rule. Having spoken to the monitoring officer, she advises I should exclude myself from item 7.5.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Agenda item four, minutes. The minutes of the meetings on the 22nd of February and the 24th of May 2023 have been distributed. Are you happy to accept these as a correct record? Okay, in that case, the minutes are approved. Agenda item five is public questions. Any member of the public, after giving their name and address, may ask a question on which the council has powers or duties or which affects the city. Questions must not exceed two minutes and the total period allowed for question time under the council's rules of procedure is 30 minutes. I understand that we have questions from five members of the public. The first question I have is from, where are we? Mr Bentley, are you here?
Presume this is on.
We can hear you.
Thank you, madam deputy mayor. In this year's budget, I put forward an amendment which highlighted the need for a better level of road cleaning service for Southwoodham Ferrars. Consequently, the leader of the council and others agreed that there was cause for concern over the quality of work done by the contractor. I had understood that the contract was due for review this summer and that bringing the service back in-house would be considered. Could council confirm that the contract will not be renewed and that the road cleaning service will be brought in-house? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Robinson, are you?
That's councillor Moore.
Forgive me, councillor Moore.
Thank you, madam deputy mayor. Thank you, Mr Bentley, for your question. In respect of cleaning Southwoodham Town Centre's pedestrianised areas, a review was undertaken in April 2023, which looked at the standards of cleaning in the area compared to what was expected, together with an examination of the costs of retaining the external contract arrangements or to bring the service back in-house. In general, the standards of cleansing are meeting expectations. New procedures are being put in place to provide closer contract management and better dialogue with the contractor. The cost of bringing this service in-house is estimated to be four times the cost of the current contract value. That's currently at £17,000 a year against £84,000 to bring this in-house and therefore would not be good value for taxpayers. I understand that Southwoodham Ferrars Town Council has previously declined to take on the service under the Community Right to Challenge scheme. That may be something they'd wish to consider in the future. The decision has been taken to retain the current contract arrangements for 2023 to 24 and to re-tender the contract from April 24 onwards. In the meantime, Mr Bentley, if you have any concerns about the quality of the service, I would encourage you to please let us know and we will raise these with the current contractor. Thank you. Thank you, madam deputy mayor.
Thank you. Our next question is from Mr Roberts.
Good evening, councillors. Casual reading, just happened to be reading the agenda for tonight and noticed the capital programme update. And the words I'm using, I have noticed from the information provided in that report that there is only one item of capital expenditure for Southwoodham Ferrars of £275,000 for replacing equipment at the swimming pool. This surely should properly fall under maintenance. Clearly, some of the £124 million plus within the total figure is tied to community infrastructure levy and S106 monies. Could you please tell me what this percentage figure is and why SWF, I used FSWF because my title was new to me before, which makes up around 10% of the district's population, is receiving less than a quarter of 1% of the capital spend? Does the city council have no future projects planned for our town which continues to pay one of the highest council tax rates in the district? Thank you.
Thank you. So councillor Robinson, please.
Yes, thank you. Nice to see you both back here this evening as visitors. And so the £275,000 of funding was allocated for major repairs. I mean, it's quite a substantial investment. That's not just, that's not just routine maintenance. The works are essential for the pool to remain in operation and to meet the health and safety standard as well as meeting the council's objectives, which I know you support, to achieve a net zero carbon position by 2030. And you asked about the percentage. So the capital programme of £124 million, 40% of it is funded by a community infrastructure levy or section 106 agreements with developers. As you're probably aware, bids for capital expenditure are submitted in line with our corporate priorities and considerations are made to assess the best use of council resources to meet the objectives of those priorities. And as you know, they have various locations around the district, but just because it's in one part of the district doesn't mean it doesn't benefit residents from the whole district. And within the £124 million forecast budget, there are schemes such as purchasing land for a cemetery and crematorium, £24 million towards various housing initiatives to alleviate the desperate housing crisis that we face, £11 million on green initiatives, which includes 17,000 trees a year right across the district. So all of those projects will benefit Southwoodham Ferrars residents as well as residents for the whole district. And as to why Southwoodham Ferrars is paying one of the highest council taxes, that would be, of course, because of the additional element that's added by Southwoodham Ferrars Town Council, of which you are both members, and so I suggest you ask them why the council tax is so high. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one question here that has been tabled by Mr D who is not able to attend. His question is on the website and I'm going to ask councillor Moore if she would respond, please.
Thank you again, madam deputy mayor. I am very happy to respond to Mr D's question, which regards garden waste collections and whether or not Chelmsford City Council is considering charging for those household garden collections, as have several neighbouring authorities. I can confirm that Chelmsford City Council has no plans to introduce a charge for household garden waste collections. Local authorities, madam deputy mayor, have been waiting for years for a national waste strategy from central government and the pace of action here is glacial. We desperately need real leadership and funding from the highest levels to ensure consistency of collections across districts and to minimise the amount of waste that end up as landfill or as incinerated. But I am proud that the city council is leading the way in Essex and we're setting an example to other local authorities with our comprehensive curbside collection service, including garden waste. There is also a wealth of information available online, both through our own city council website and the Love Your Chelmsford website, with advice on sustainable choices and waste reduction through reuse, repair, composting and recycling as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a question from Mr G, who again is not able to attend this evening. His question has been circulated and is on the website. I'll ask councillor Robinson to respond, please.
Thank you, madam deputy mayor. I'm just, I think it's worth observing that I'm proud of the fact that we have extended public question time to allow people who aren't present to ask questions. And so I'm happy to answer this question, which for those who haven't seen it, just to be clear, it's referring to the conversion of offices to flats in Leg Street. And the questions are, that refers to the fact that the Home Office is housing migrants in this former office block and asks whether the Home Office consulted the council and do we know, does this council know about the identities of the people in there? And asks various other questions about the legal status of those. But I won't read that out. I will just go straight to the answer. Neither Chelmsford City Council or Essex County Council were consulted on this development. Indeed, councils right across the country have found themselves notified rather than consulted about asylum seekers, refugees coming to their district. And the Home Office just tells us that it's going to happen. We were not consulted. Chelmsford and Essex have both asked numerous questions about what is planned, but the answers have been vague and nonspecific. Local councils are, of course, very concerned about the impact on health and education and other public services from the sudden influx of potentially very vulnerable residents arriving in our district. But we're not told in advance the social makeup or the numbers of the people who are coming or when exactly they are coming. The Home Office outsources the finding of accommodation to a company called Clear Spring Ready Homes, who if you Google search them, don't have a terribly good track record. And they in turn outsource local management to another company. One might think this was designed by the Home Office to reduce accountability and transparency. It is certainly unsatisfactory way to do it. Chelmsford City Council's community safety team has a close working relationship with the local police and carries out a range of activities to keep everyone safe as a matter of normal activity, as you're all aware. Essex police, like us, would have welcomed greater and earlier clarity about the proposals for this site. But they, like us, get invited to meetings where we're told what might be happening. The city council is routinely notified of all serious criminal activity in the district. So we were aware of a serious domestic violence incident at Leg Street a few weeks ago. However, crime statistics show that if migrants are involved in crime, it is much more likely to be as the victim of a crime, not as a perpetrator.
Thank you. Our final question this evening is from Mrs Tabera. If you would like to come forward, please.
Good evening, everyone. My question to the council, what is preventing the council from fully renting out Avon Road allotments? I ask this question because there is frustration for us as the plot holders with the mismanagement and lack of engagement of the council over recent years. And this was highlighted by the recent incident at our allotment. We have seen the state of things and have offered to assist and been willing to help the council accurately identify the empty plots and those that have been abandoned. I know for a fact we are not alone in our frustrations. Melbourne Park allotments have the same frustrations with the council. On a positive note, because of what happened, I'm hopeful things could now change and the council would now see that collaboration would be financially beneficial for them and for the ongoing welfare and good management of these allotments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Moore?
Thank you again. Thank you very much for coming along this evening, Mrs Tabera, to ask your question. The city council is keen to see greater use of allotments right across the district and we recognise their value, both within communities and to our own individual health and wellbeing. And where we can, we will be providing new ones as part of new development schemes. Just by way of background for members of the public and fellow members here, Chelmsford City Council manages 23 allotment sites across the district, providing 1,135 plots, of which 94% are currently occupied. The city council's experience to date is that there is low demand for allotment plots in the Chignall and Melbourne area, but not enough provision in other areas, which may explain the higher levels of vacant plots that you have mentioned specifically at Avon Road and also in Melbourne. Of the 72 vacant plots, we have 40 are at Avon Road. The larger sites at Avon Road and to a lesser degree in Melbourne are the only sites where we have vacant plots at present. These plots are offered when inquiries are made for specific plots and where there are no vacancies on other sites. There are also several plots which are currently let but which may not be fully tended or maintained and these plots are periodically identified and inspected. And I did hear recently about the issues that you encounter in Avon Road and I am very sorry to hear the distress that has caused. I understand you have been contacted by the council and I hope from now on we will be able to make sure that the subcontractors involved are aware of the conditions of those plots. If appropriate, the allotment tenants are contacted and reminded that plots need to be tended and maintained in accordance with our allotment tenancy agreement. It's very important, obviously, that procedures for doing so are followed and administered proportionately. On a positive note, the city council has recently engaged with Abboton Rural Training and a community allotment at Avon Road has been set up to provide local training opportunities and to encourage more participation in growing locally and close to home. The city council is happy to engage with plot holders and it would help if this wider engagement could be through a local allotment association, as is the case, for example, at Melbourne allotments. If such an association exists or could be formed at Avon Road, I would encourage you to make contact with our officers, who would be very happy to speak with you. And that would be the lead officer, Paul Van Damme, our Parks and Green Spaces manager. Thank you, madam deputy mayor.
Can I just? Thank you. I'm sorry, no, please be seated, but thank you. There being no more questions, we will move on to the next business, which is cabinet question time. At the time of the deadline of noon on Friday, three questions had been submitted for cabinet members, along with a set of questions relating to item 12. The questions for item 12 will be answered during that item later in the meeting as they relate to an exempt item. The first is from councillor Pappas and I'll ask councillor Moore to respond to it.
I'd like to ask the question.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Good evening, everybody. During the recent election campaign, many residents expressed their concerns on Highlands parking charges. One of my residents expressed a real concern regarding the parking charges situation at Highlands House. She mentioned that her child has ADHD and when parking was free at Highlands, she used to take her child there almost every day. However, now the parking has become unaffordable for everyday visiting, she and her child are forced to spend their time indoors. Question. The city council currently allows those with blue badge holders to park at Highlands Park without payment. Given this children play area was specially designed for use of disabled children, who by definition will not be blue badge holders, will the cabinet member look at introducing a scheme for those with special needs to be allowed a similar concession for free parking? I kindly request the council to consider giving free access to Highlands House car parking to those who have special needs, including parents with children who have ADHD and any such needs. It would make a great difference in their life. And I would also like to take this opportunity to congratulate all my fellow councillors and thank all the officers of the council. And of course, without saying, my lovable Patching Hall residents who has put me in here.
Thank you, councillor Pappas. Thank you. Councillor Moore, please.
Thank you. Thank you for your question, councillor Pappas. I am pleased to say that the parent you mentioned may not have to worry. People with hidden disabilities are also entitled to apply for a blue badge status and that includes the parents of children with such disabilities. Madam deputy mayor, I hope that councillor Pappas will indeed encourage his constituent to apply for a blue badge. And I understand she can do that via Essex County Council, though I believe they may have a backlog, so it could take a few months for them to process her application. And councillor Pappas, I would add that once your resident has her blue badge, we hope, she will be entitled to park for free at Highlands Park, but unfortunately not in Essex County Council country parks as they do charge for blue badge holders. If, however, a car park user isn't entitled to a blue badge, there are a number of options available for payment at Highlands Park. If you are a regular visitor to the park, the most cost-effective solution will be a season ticket, either on a weekday or a seven-day-per-week basis. If the season ticket holder is a resident of the city council area, then an annual five-day season ticket will cost £54, which equates to a charge of around £0.26 per visit if that individual visits on four occasions every week, representing very good value. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second question is from councillor Thorpaps. Can we find another microphone?
Seems to be working now. Thank you, madam deputy mayor. Over recent years, we've seen a concerning increase in dog attacks across Chelmsford. And I know the cabinet member was on the radio last week talking about this and I was interested to hear her comments. I understand the council's desire to take action and of course we have the current consultation on the Public Spaces Protection Order at Highlands Park. At cabinet, a paper was presented and agreed on this proposal, which commented on the 33 dog-related incidents that took place between July 20 and July 21 and stated that such incidents are on the rise. But having reviewed the figures with the assistance of officers, it transpires that of those 33 dog incidents mentioned in the paper, only three actually are related to Highlands Park. Moreover, whilst the data does show that the number of recorded incidents has increased across Chelmsford over the last few years, with 78 this year, the number of reported incidents at Highlands Park was the same in 2022 as it was back in 2020, three incidents. Now, of course, one dog-related incident is one too many. But would the cabinet member concede that based on the actual data at hand, there isn't a clear case for a PSPO at Highlands? And would she agree that the council should perhaps instead be focusing on locations where data shows that incidents have actually increased? Why is Highlands being singled out for this PSPO? Thank you.
Councillor Moore, please.
Thank you, madam deputy mayor, and thank you councillor Thorpaps for your question and follow-up. The underlying cause of the known dog attacks we've seen The underlying cause of the known dog attacks we've seen isn't down to a location. They could happen anywhere, and it's the increased trend, both locally and nationally, that is most concerning, and that we have a duty to consider and, if possible, implement measures that mitigate risk. Madam Deputy Mayor, as councillor Thorp Appes states, one dog-related incident is too many, and I think we can all be agreed on that. One of the examples in the cabinet report at Highlands was of a family approached by five loose large dogs, possibly rottweilers. One jumped on a four-year-old child, and there was then a verbal argument between subject and complainant. I'm afraid it's all too easy to see how incidents like this could have horrific consequences, and I'm sure that members will agree with me that we should be considering using existing powers we do have to try to prevent such incidents. The incidents being reported to our council are occurring across the district, with no one location reporting particularly high numbers. But Highlands is being considered for PSPO for two main reasons. Firstly, the risk to small children is significant here due to the park being heavily used during fine weather, especially for family picnics within the parkland, allowing children to be under less parental supervision, as the risks from hazards from nearby roads, cycle paths and water features is lower in Highlands Estate, especially in the popular bowl area between the fort play area and Highlands House. The hazards I mention, which are more prevalent in other parks, particularly Central Park, are also why dogs will tend to be kept on lead in those other parks. Secondly, because of Highland's size, this allows for restrictions to be introduced without disadvantaging any section of the public. And should the PSPO be agreed, approximately eighty-five per cent of Highlands parkland would remain available for people to walk their dog off the lead. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to move on to agenda item seven, reports from the cabinet. Agenda item seven point one, the first four reports under item seven are from the cabinet on the sixth of July and will be introduced by councillor Robinson.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Yes, of course.
Councillor Knight, please submit a question, and as you know, he can't be here.
Councillor Knight's question will be replied to directly to councillor Knight, thank you. By email, yeah. The first is on the Treasury Management Outturn Report twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three. councillor Robinson, please.
Yes, thank you very much. Apologies to those of you who attended Cabinet, because I say almost exactly the same as I said there. This and the next one are both items on the agenda that look back to the year that ended on the thirty-first of March. So this first one, the Treasury Management Outturn, Treasury Management is about how officers manage our cash and borrowings, and this is just one part of ensuring sound financial management, which this authority has always practised and will continue to do so. The council will always manage its finances properly, taking account of risks and taking proper advice from the officers, and will have a robust process in place whereby activity is monitored by the Treasury Management and Investment Subcommittee, who reviewed the report. It then went to Cabinet, where it was approved, and it's now presented to you for your approval. I'll take any questions.
There don't appear to be any questions. Is this seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you. Is the recommendation in the report agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Agenda item seven point two.
Thank you very much. So this is, again, looking back to the year that ended on the thirty-first of March. It covers what we spent on capital investment for last year. Capital spending concerns money that we spend on buying land, property, investing in leisure facilities, the crematorium, improving existing buildings, replacing vehicles and so on. There's a lot of detail in this paper, especially in the appendices. And some of the projects are new investment in leisure facilities, such as the new athletics track, so that we could hold more competitions, which we recently have done, gym improvements, work on the Southwood and Ferrars Pool that we've referred to, improving the facilities at Highlands House to attract new events, land regeneration to create new units for businesses which are now being rented out, investment to look after the sadly rapidly growing number of homeless households, a major modernisation of our rather tired theatre, which has seen sell-out performances consistently since it reopened in January, and of course, further protecting our environment by planting over seventeen thousand trees a year. All of that is capital investment, creating a greener, fairer and better-connected Chelmsford. This report identifies some of the changes in costs which were approved by Cabinet, and the schemes and replacement cost changes are detailed in the report. The funding of the capital programme is managed by our officers, and the section one five of one officer's job is to set out that, and he's done so later on in the report, and will seek to minimise revenue, the costs of capital financing. So I'll take any questions.
Is this seconded?
Seconded.
Are the recommendations in the report agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. We move on to agenda item seven point three. councillor Robinson again, please.
Thank you very much. So the medium-term financial strategy is where we have a forward look over the next couple of years to ensure that the council is on a sound financial basis going forwards. However, that's quite difficult at the moment, given that the major uncertainties in our budget are completely outside of our control. We have been suffering, as has every household, every council in the country, has been suffering from rampant inflation, exacerbated by the chaos caused in Downing Street by the, what was it, eight weeks of madness of his trust? And we are all having to deal with that. As I alluded to on the previous item, the increased costs of homelessness is just one of the things, the major financial challenges that we as a council face. We now have over four hundred homeless households that we are looking after. These uncertainties mean that it's very difficult to present a fully worked-up outline budget for next year at this stage. So this is a relatively short report and contains recommendations on the framework by which we will set next year's budget, but at this stage doesn't go into a huge amount of detail. In the autumn, we will report to Cabinet and then to council on the revenue and capital budgets. And as I hinted at already, we are currently, as per the last four years, facing a significant revenue budget shortfall due to those increased costs of inflation. However, there are some things which might improve the forecast position, and we'll be able to have a more accurate position that we can bring to you in the autumn. So as I said, this is, we remain in a very difficult environment. Budgeting will be difficult, and this report sets out the key challenges in producing the budget. And as well as inflation, the government never tells us more than a year ahead what, whether, if they're going to give us any funding at all, or what it's likely to be. So with all of these challenges, it's making budgeting for all councils, irrespective of political colour, very difficult. So this is a report that sets out how we will create the budget for next year, and we'll return to you in the autumn. Thank you.
Is this seconded?
Seconded.
Are the recommendations in the report agreed?
Agreed.
Oh, sorry, councillor Whitehead, I didn't see.
Sorry. No, just to make the point, we're not ignoring the previous two reports either. We've discussed them, Treasury Management Subcommittee and at Cabinet as well, really, so that we won't rehearse them again. I wasn't sure whether you were going to mention your windfall that we learned about recently on VAT, because that does affect the situation, doesn't it, really, to everybody's advantage, really? But otherwise, budgeting and forecasting is very difficult, except for the future, apparently, where it's impossible. So I will leave it to you to say that, perhaps.
Yes, on that point, I'm very, very pleased that Chelmsford council was brave enough to take on HM Revenue and Customs and has proven to the courts that swimming pools are a public health activity and therefore should not be vattable, and therefore we should be getting a refund from Revenue and Customs soon, but it still hasn't arrived yet.
Thank you. The next item is on proposed amendments to the constitution. councillor Robinson, please.
We haven't agreed.
Oh, we haven't agreed, oh dear, I'm going ahead of myself here, aren't I? Are the recommendations in the report agreed on seven point three?
Agreed.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to seven point four, proposed amendments to the constitution. councillor Robinson.
Yes, sorry, me again. So these are four relatively minor amendments to the constitution which have been through the working group, governance committee, Cabinet and now to council. I don't think they're particularly controversial. There are four things, as I say. One, that other members of the council who are not on working groups may attend to make it clear that they can attend working groups but aren't entitled to speak. The second one is that when the seal of the council has to be fixed to contracts, we're suggesting the mayor doesn't need to be present anymore to witness the officer who's signing it. The third amendment is to add the words Rural England Prosperity Fund to the grant scheme. And the fourth item is to delegate to officers the ability to adopt neighbourhood plans so that they don't have to come to council. I move.
Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you. Are the recommendations in the report agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. The fifth report under item seven is from the cabinet meeting of the fourteenth of March. It's regarding amendments to council tax premiums in respect of empty properties with effect from the first of April twenty-twenty-four. councillor Marie Goldman, please.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I won't spend too long talking about this paper, it has already been through cabinets, and now it comes before you to full council this evening. The purpose of this proposal is to extend the imposition of council tax premiums levied in respect of empty properties, once a property has been empty and unfurnished for twelve months, or if a property is empty and substantially furnished, otherwise known as a second home. So it essentially affects two different types of property. We're talking about properties that are either long-term empty, so with the proposal is to change the policies so that now comes into effect after one year instead of the current two years. And the second type of property is about second homes, so homes which are not the main residence of the owner or occupier, where a hundred per cent premium is proposed to be levied. We have a housing crisis. It was declared by this council a couple of years ago, and even if this council hadn't declared it, it is blindingly obvious surely to everybody that there are not enough homes to go round. We have a housing crisis, we need to be building more homes, and we need the government to be leading on that. However, it is affecting us right here in Chelmsford right now, and we have over four hundred families living in temporary accommodation right here in Chelmsford. And if that doesn't explain the crisis to you, or to the council and Madam Deputy Mayor, then I struggle to know what would. The aim of this policy is not to bring in more council tax income, although it will bring in some more council tax income, but really it is to bring more houses back into use. I'd also like to note that the council tax income figures that are quoted, just bear in mind that they are not all revenue that the city council gets to keep, as there are a number of other preceptors, and that means that other councils such as Essex County Council, and while Chelmsford City Council collects all of the council tax that residents pay on their, when they receive their council tax bills, we don't get to keep it all. A large, large percentage of it goes back out to other preceptors, such as Essex County Council or parish councils. And secondly, I'd just like to mention that the report has come forward from Cabinet, where it went previously. Things have moved on a bit since it was last presented, and I just wanted to correct an item in there which says that the levelling up and regeneration bill is at committee stage in the report. That's actually now incorrect and outdated. The levelling up and regeneration bill is now at report stage in the House of Lords. I'll take any questions. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
I would like to ask a question.
councillor Papper?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. The levy on unoccupied properties was introduced by this council a number of years ago to address the problem of long-term unoccupied properties. However, the current state of housing market means that there is a real danger that the properties may remain unsold beyond twelve months, through no fault of the property owner. This could place further financial hardships on the prospective vendor, who would be paying double tax for an unoccupied property. I should therefore like to propose an amendment to item seven point five. The levy can be weighed in exceptional circumstances, for example, when the homeowner can demonstrate that the property has been on market at a reasonable price through the twelve-month period. Thank you. We also welcome the government's leadership on home building announced yesterday. We look forward to the cabinet members' plans that will surely follow. Thank you.
councillor Papper, I just want to say, you used the word amendment. I'm afraid it wouldn't be a valid amendment that you are proposing.
I propose an amendment. Is it proposed?
councillor Doherty.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. So as you have already said, Madam Deputy Mayor, that this is not a valid amendment. However, I will address the issue that you have raised, because actually it's already addressed in the report. So the council has discretion, where, for example, if you look at, I think it's paragraph four point, well, section four, in paragraph four point one, it says, any decision to reduce or remove the discounts on empty properties or to impose premiums needs to take into account local circumstances. Any change in policy would mean that the council could increase hardship with those taxpayers who are already struggling or unable to sell a second property, but then we can take into account local circumstances. So I believe it's already dealt with within the policy itself anyway. I can write to you to confirm that afterwards, and I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So has this been seconded?
Yeah.
Yep, thank you. So are the recommendations in the report agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. We're moving on to agenda item eight, for the council to note some recent changes to committee membership, which councillor Robinson will present.
Yes, following councillor Knight's resignation from the Conservative Group, the Conservative Group have made a couple of changes to their membership of committees. The governance committee welcomes councillor Bentley, and independent persons are appointed to the Audit and Risk Committee.
Thank you.
Same move.
Are the changes, has this been seconded?
Seconded.
Thank you. And are the changes in the report noted?
Noted.
Thank you. Item nine is the annual report of the Audit and Risk Committee for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, which will be introduced by councillor Nora Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'm pleased to present the annual report from the Audit and Risk Committee to the council tonight. The Audit and Risk Committee recently agreed its annual report, which full council are being asked tonight to note and approve. The annual report details various areas, including its work programme from twenty-two, twenty-three, the terms of reference, the annual charter, the future work for the year twenty-three to twenty-four. During the past twelve months, the committee met four times, considering matters such as the revenue and capital outruns, modern slavery, counter fraud strategy, updates from the external auditors and the internal audit plan. I would like to also take this opportunity tonight to thank the officers and members of the committee who have supported the work of the committee over the past twelve months. I'm happy to answer any questions and then recommend that the council notes this annual report. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that seconded?
Agreed.
Thank you. Is the recommendation in the report approved? Thank you. Item ten is the annual report of the Governance Committee for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, which will be introduced by councillor Chris Davidson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Council has asked to approve the annual report of the Governance Committee on this item. This report's on the work of the committee last year, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three. I'm in a slightly odd position that I was not the chair of the committee at that time, I wasn't even on the committee, and most of the other members of the Governance Committee currently were not on governance last time. But nevertheless, we agreed the report at our meeting last month. The report details various areas of work that the committee undertook during twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, including monitoring the council's approach to governance, to complaints about city parish or town councillors, changes to the constitution, and we've just agreed some of those, and monitoring matters such as whistleblowing and the use of investigative powers. So I'm not going to say any more. I'm happy to take questions. If there aren't any, then I'll simply propose that council approve the annual report of the Governance Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that seconded?
Agreed.
Is the recommendation in the report approved?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item eleven is the annual report of the Overview and Scrutiny Committee for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, which will be introduced by councillor Sue Young. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. As in previous years, the Overview and Scrutiny Committee has produced an annual report which full council are asked to approve for publication. The annual report covers the statute provisions that the committee works under, its terms of reference, and the previous and current membership. The report also details the work undertaken in twenty-twenty-two-twenty-three, which included updates from Cabinet members and performance reviews of individual service areas. I would like to thank officers for their support throughout the year, and commend the work of members and officers who were part of the task and finish groups established during this year. I'm happy to answer any questions, and then recommend that the council approves this annual report for publication.
Thank you, is that seconded? Thank you. And is the report, the recommendations in the report approved? Thank you. The next three reports we need to consider at this meeting contain exempt information, and therefore we must formally exclude the public from the meeting. I therefore move that the public be excluded from the meeting during the consideration of Items Twelve, Thirteen and Fourteen, as they contain exempt information within paragraph three of Part One of Schedule twelve A to the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two.